Courtney's getting those.
What's that?
Courtney's printing them for me.
Okay.
Okay.
Good morning. Gentlemen.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Yeah? Got a motion? And a second to approve the agenda. Call for vote, primer eye?
Team an eye.
Beer shake eye.
Very good. Now we have the minutes. I'm gonna make a recommendation. Haley's done a great job of knocking down the discussion and comments portion. But in order to be in complete compliance with our training last week from IPID, they recommended no discussion, no comments. And I would state that needs to be for this current set of minutes and going forward. Can't change what's in the past.
Point of order on the minutes.
Yes, sir.
We need, all these people probably really need to see what was in there, what isn't in there. Because you may not, you may have inconclusive minutes. And I think everybody, before you approve them, you should, everybody should get a chance.
That is correct. And what was given to us, Doug, in our training, was that it is, the minute should have, have basically any action item, is what we were told.
Any action item needs to be in there.
Yeah, so in other words, if it's on the agenda to do action, that's what we, we have in there.
Plus, I try to summarize resolutions and so, the more we put in there, the more we pay to publish.
Yeah. And so that's why the discussion comments portion would be omitted. And we would not be the only county that does this by any means.
Okay, so then I can honestly ask you a specific question and that, without trying to rifle through this quick, before you approve the minutes, that the files that Tracy was planning on moving, is that in here that you approved moving those files?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And how Gary abstained, it's in there.
Okay, I just, I'm just trying to.
Yep. And you'll see the full resolutions in there because that's what's printed and put in the official record minute book in the courthouse.
Okay.
And signed, but what I send to the paper, I summarize all those resolutions. But you can find it all online or in our courthouse.
Well, that's what I was starting to do the other day and I was trying to figure out how you put all your minutes in there.
Yep.
Because they go from when you, usually the page that pops up is the newest one, but it's not. You start January 2nd.
Yeah, and then we keep adding to it, so it's the full timeline.
Rather than, rather than the first page.
Correct.
That's kind of where.
Yep, and it should be the full version, whereas the newspaper prints my summarized.
And that would be a discussion item, excuse me, that was an action item.
That would, yeah. But still, it should be recorded, correct?
An action item would be, yeah.
Okay.
All the other chatter, if you will, would not be. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
Got it. Thanks Haley.
And then, and she did a, a great job reducing it here, but there's still some comments and discussion and that would be omitted and just shortened up just as coach.
Now, would it be omitted in her records that are kept there or the records going to the, that are printed or that are put out?
That should be both.
Both, is what we were told from IPID.
So public comments are not?
Well, I put like a little bit like the subject of what was discussed, but not like every word for word or there's no way I could.
And we're going to, my recommendation according to IPID, the way I got it, all that's omitted.
All that's omitted?
Yep.
Interesting.
Yep. So, that was their recommendation.
Okay.
Things that we were trained on.
I can always find out from another source.
Sure.
For sure.
That's my recommendation, gentlemen.
Only thing I've seen she's got on the big set of minutes, twice in there. Haley, you gotta mention that we approved Kim's cigarette permit.
Oh, okay.
On there twice.
Because I think I had to go back because they should bring it back, so I'll fix it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
So, I, um.
That would be as direct, as my recommendation. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
So what does that mean, not approving the current minutes?
Not approving the current minutes.
Okay.
That she would delete the discussion and comments.
Okay.
You mean?
That way we are in compliance with the Iowa Public Information Board.
Sure.
So the ones I sent you, I did kind of eliminate comments?
Well, you didn't eliminate all of them.
Okay, so you want me to go back?
So you would eliminate all of them, yeah.
But at the bottom, you don't want me to leave those little bits of what was discussed, like with the roads or any of that? Under public comments, at the very bottom, it's very summarized.
Very end of it?
Yes. Right before we adjourn, I put just very little blip.
I have that you.
I put, uh.
You have that.
Kelly Van Reen inquired about the proposed software and cost.
What, what page is that, please?
It's the very end, right before we adjourn on the first set. And I put Jerry Greve inquired on the secondary roads project and David Thompson gave a quick repair update on the clock.
Well, that's under public comments. I don't know, gentlemen, how would you read that with our training? Again, with our training, that's, that wasn't an action item. According to what we got instructed last week, I would say they're, they're omitted. Last page.
Would you go by what they instructed us to do? I guess you're not supposed to put that in because that's not an actual, action item.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright. That's the way I interpreted it, so, yeah.
Okay, I will clean up that, like a whole paragraph then.
Alright, very good. I need to call for a vote. Okay? Primer eye?
Team an eye.
Beer shake eye.
Very good, thank you.
Those were all three sets then with those three?
Correct. Robert?
Am I gonna have time before you?
I don't know that we have a 9:15. We could probably jump, come back to you if that's okay.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, how about a Class C? Thank you.
Just wanted to keep our work permits as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this first one you sent us.
Yeah, it come electronically. They can do those through our website and it'll come to us that way.
Cool. Yeah, get this stuff. Get that looked over, Gary?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve the Class C retail alcohol license for Casino Farms? It's for August 7th. Get a motion for that, please?
I'll make a motion for 12 month to.
Yes, yes.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Call for vote, please, primer eye?
Team an eye.
Beer shake eye.
You just need an initial anywhere?
Yep.
Okay.
On that one.
There you go, thank you. Okay, you've got a, uh, Iowa Pirate Technic Association fireworks permit. This is for July 20th. Any questions on that, gentlemen?
No.
No.
Okay. Do they have? Someone sign off on this from the fire department?
Yeah, isn't there stuff on the back? I thought he sent me his certificates and everything.
I don't know that I had, yeah, I got the certificates, but I didn't see a signature from the fire department. That's supposed to be on the application, so I guess we.
That one was for the.
Iowa, uh.
Fire Department?
Pirate Technic Association.
I guess I didn't look it over closely.
Yeah, it's right on the front.
He marked it though, so I don't know if he's gonna be following up with that. He could approve it and say and.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, this is my copy.
And reflecting of getting that signature.
Okay. So this would be subject to getting that signature from the fire department?
Yep.
Can I get a motion to approve that?
Make a motion, approve the Iowa Pirate Assistant Association permit for July 20th of 24.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. That moved and seconded, call for vote, primer eye?
Team an eye.
Beer shake eye.
And then that other one, when it's on the actual 4th, I was thinking the state superseded that county, but did they, you know, on the actual 4th of July with that state ruling?
Okay.
But I had him put it on there just in case. It's for a church function and they've done it in the past.
Okay.
And he has his insurance on there.
Alright. Will they need to get the, uh.
Well, I don't, that's just it because if you read that, when the law went into effect, they're already restricted to certain hours and et cetera on the actual 4th of July.
Sure, I've seen that. Okay, alright.
But this way we notify the sheriff's office and such so that they know if they get calls where they're at.
Sure. I need to get a sign for that, this. No, I don't. Do you want to initial the fireworks permit?
I think there was a spot to sign it because we have to put mark that it was approved on.
Yes.
That's the.
That's the, yeah.
That's the courthouse grounds, so just, here it is. It's on the other page.
Oh.
It's on the back.
Oh, sure, okay, thank you. Thank you. Get a chance to look that over, gentlemen?
Yes, motion to approve.
Okay, fireworks permit for Randy Nash?
Yes, second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve the fireworks permit for Randy Nash. Call for vote, please, primer eye?
Team an eye.
Beer shake eye.
Good. Well, Matt?
I have a copy.
Thank you.
Paul and Susan Phillips are requesting change the use of approximately two acres of land to allow for two single family dwellings and a workshop. This site was located approximately two miles northwest of Shelsburg in Section 3 of Canton Township. This site is located on a 16.29 acre parcel that is owned by the applicants. No part of this parcel is considered high quality farmland. The parcel has an average weighted corn stability rating of 66 and this parcel is currently in hay production. There is an existing driveway used to access this property. Randy Sherwood with secondary roads reported that this driveway was updated a few years ago, so it conforms to county policy. 62nd Street of County Rock Road has an annual average daily traffic count of 45 vehicles. A private sewage disposal system will need to be installed at this site and a pre-construction main has already occurred. A private water well will also need to be installed to serve these new dwellings. There are road crops located north of this site, to the south there's pasture land, and then to the west and east, there are single family dwellings or proposed single family dwellings. Seven notices were sent out to adjacent property owners and legal notices were published in official newspapers of Benton County as required by the ordinance. And as of today, Benton County land use did not receive any comments regarding this request. This proposal is located in an area with a lower corn stability rating and is located in an area with steep slopes, which is not conducive to farming. The applicant also intends to have some agricultural activities on this property. This proposal should not have any negative impacts on surrounding farm operations.
Good.
And do you have anything you would like to add there?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, alright.
Gentlemen, have any questions?
How does that work, Barb, since he's gonna put two small houses on one person?
Going to have to have two separate septic systems for those. And depends if, if he's also looking at maybe a holding tank in his shop. Not sure yet what all of his plans are, but as long as he doesn't split anything off, it's, won't affect Benton County. If he goes to split, then he'll be a split, he'll be a property if it's already been split.
And they can do a shared well, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Very good.
Motion approved, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Call for vote, please, primer eye?
Team an eye.
Beer shake eye.
Very good, thank you. Robert?
Alright.
I knew we'd finally get to you.
That's alright, I wanted to make sure we had plenty of times.
I handed them out what you sent me.
Good, good, okay. We got word that we're being moved out of our office. I, I just, I'm kind of disappointed at the lack of communications. We were never contacted and discussed with anything prior to this. We, our commission is your historical arm. We do things for you which affects the county, we help the public. Citizens of Benton County who have historic properties, we help them with tax credits for historical stuff. But we, we do a lot of stuff and we need our information in one location where we can come and work and not put things away or, or, you know, leave things out where we know what's going on so we don't mess things up. We want to make sure we get everything right for people when they come in to us to do their historic property. They have to come through us to do, to get on the national register. So we have to have meetings and stuff, so that, that's one of the things I wanted to make sure you knew because we feel it's important that we have an office to where we can come and do our work. The paper that I had Haley give to you all tells what we are supposed to do or how we are supposed to be involved. And I don't know that we've been involved in anything much from you guys. Haven't seen any of you at our meetings, but I think we're an important part, just like any other board or commission. And I just want you to really think about that. Think about how the citizens of the county are affected by the work that we do. We do projects, the clock, courthouse clock project is our business, is our project. Along with the Sheriff Frye memorial stuff, that's our project. We work with the law enforcement group on that. And we have activities throughout the county that we do each year. We did Youngville last year to focus the historical value of that property and what it was and just kind of focus on them. So we try to do that across the whole county. All that takes time and effort and a place to do it. And that, that's what I've asked them that you consider, we do need an office and a place to do our work. So, I don't know, do you guys have anything to add?
Yeah, for example, with the historic area in Benton here, this was set up by the city of Benton after the 08 flood. It's an historic area kind of in the south central part of the city. It wouldn't exist if we didn't have a historic preservation commission in our county. Well, years ago, one of our projects was to do a, during kind of the back end of COVID, we did a, a national presentation, about 30, 35 people attended, mainly online. We, we did the event at Blairstown or at, yeah, Blairstown at the center there.
Van Horn.
Van Horn, I'm sorry. And but, you know, people from all over the country actually participated and the three speakers for that event were from, mainly from the Memphis area, for example. Ordinarily, those kinds of events are held in places like Chicago, Portland, New York and so on. We did it in Benton County, a, a national event, pretty cool.
And a lot of that was done planned and organized in the office so we can have everything taken care of and laid outright so we could all get together to do it.
Before we moved to the office here, and we have, we have appreciated very much having a home. Before that, the records were stored at the courthouse and, and in a couple of different places. And we actually didn't have access to the historic preservation records from the past without going through a lot of rigmarole and so on. And they were stored in, was it with some confidential organization? So they had to have one of their representatives present when we looked at our own records. I mean, that is not smart.
And some of our records were stored in, at personal homes and were lost. We don't have some of them. So that's what we want to try to avoid is going back to something that, that didn't work. It's, it's not good for us or you if we are asked about something and, well, we had it, but now we don't. So I.
I think we're one of the most active historic preservation groups in the whole state and we've been recognized for that. Actually, this week, we meet in Mount Pleasant Thursday, Wednesday night, Thursday, Friday and Saturday morning for our annual Historic Summit Iowa event. And we'll be showcasing some of the things that we've accomplished over the last year, including this Youngville thing this year, the past year. We're doing neat stuff.
We have a lot of stuff to do. So I, that's.
Was the office space that you had sufficient for you?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't realize that you folks left things laid out like on a table or such.
Yeah, we have to because there's so much stuff that goes on. If we put it away, we could, we, we lose a lot of time.
Start over, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, makes sense, alright, very good. Well, we will try to find a spot and I, hopefully you understand with the public health why we're shuffling, you know?
When, when are we going to be shuffled?
Don't know that that's planned yet. I don't even know if they've got an assistant, I don't know that, so.
Alright, we just asked that you keep us in mind and that we do need a place.
Definitely.
Do you, you folks ever keep your records off-site?
We try not to because that's how we lost records. You know, either in the shuffle or, you know, in a personal home, you don't know what's happening. So we've had things disappear.
Okay, well, we'll try to come up with a, a good alternative for you.
And we asked that you please keep us in the loop?
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
In fact, Robert, before you leave today, I'd like to get your phone number. I don't think I have it, so.
Alright, I'll get it to Haley.
Get it to Haley?
Yep.
Okay, good, then I can get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, yep.
Moving on. Sue, you've got vacation carryover?
Yeah, several requests for turning over eight days beyond my anniversary date. I've had a chance to resolve that.
Okay.
Working some longer hours, so I don't need to be at.
It's coming around. Okay. Don't we usually give a timeframe, gentlemen? I can't recall.
Sometimes we do, most times we do.
You have a date in mind?
I didn't see that on there, sorry. Just says vacation time period over must, must be taken within the time period specified by the department head, so I guess. I don't, I haven't, um, do you typically do like, is there a typical, like 90 days, like October 1st?
Do you remember how it's usually done?
Sometimes you usually give them certain days or depending on the budget that's new because then the new wages come out.
Yeah.
And then they're paid at the higher rate for the vacation.
Yeah, I thought she's gonna get it in before the new budget, so, yeah.
Is like October 1 reasonable or, I mean, again, I'm getting that help now, so I think that will be an opportunity to take a little more time off.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that, gentlemen. That's what, about 90 days? Maybe 120, I can't.
Alright, give or kill, October 1.
Thank you.
Alright, is that your motion?
That's my motion, second.
Been moved and seconded to do the vacation carryover, eight days until October 1 of 24. Call for vote, primer eye?
Team an eye.
Beer shake eye.
Very good. I just want an initial on this, Haley. Do you want me to put the date on?
Yeah. Yeah, please.
Thank you. All right, we've got authorized chair to sign the thirty-day burn acceptance letter. This is for E911, the radio project. What, what's the, the burn?
So, right, that's why I came. I figured you'd want a little explanation.
I figured it's a testing time.
Everybody wants copies, I guess, and, uh, did you guys all get it or? Okay. So this is just another?
No, I don't think you've got it, Gary. I just, I just got it handed to me.
You just got it, okay. Sorry, I thought maybe she sent it out, all three of you.
I did, I think I did. I did send it to him.
That's fine. So, um, in the radio system project, everything was installed and up and running in Benton County on the Benton County system only, not, not, not connected into the Sarah White network. They set it up as Benton County only for doing all the testing that was done by the middle of April. We spent two days doing a lot of voice quality testing around the county. That was all very successful. And then in the industry, they follow that up with what they call a thirty-day burn. And as we found out, the thirty days is just an arbitrary number picked out of the blue sky. It, it doesn't mean anything. So we started that process and we have three legacy VHF systems interop into the new system because that's what we're still working on, the county fire, the county EMA repeater and the county EMS. Those are degrading quickly. Uh, they're way past their life as far as the, the equipment. And so as we got into the thirty-day burn period, the quality of that audio was degrading on a daily basis. So we asked Raycom to bump that period up. We were comfortable with twenty days. The equipment's been working flawlessly for over thirty days. We didn't feel we needed another full thirty day. In that, in that timeframe, we have, all law enforcement has the new radios, portables in their hands and have been using it daily. That's part of the process. We're using that new system also. Bell Plain PD is on it, uh, Conservation is on it, Benton PD had to come on it because their legacy VHS system started failing on them. So we brought in even more partners than we thought we were going to for that burn period. And everything's been working flawlessly. We've had no major issues at all and only a couple minor issues. So Raycom and our radio committee agreed to knock that down to a twenty-day burn and that's what that document is. And even our consultant, Mike Day, agreed with that. And Raycom has already signed it. We just need your signature that the test period dates were May 7th, 2024 through May 26th, 2024. There were no major failures. A minor failure was a loss of an encryption key on dispatch number two, which was fixed immediately. And there were no system-wide issues during that timeframe. We're all happy and confident with the new system working. So we're trying to get on it as quickly as we can. Tonight and tomorrow night, we're doing all the training on all the portable radios for all the agencies that are coming to my office to get training on how to use the new portable radios. And then they're going to be issued to them. That will occur the next two nights and then next Monday at 10:00 a.m., we are cutting over to the new system on portable only. And then they start the mobile install through the end of June and hopefully not too far into July. We're pushing them hard to get all the mobiles installed once we're cut over on this system so that we can use it and get rid of the old VHF. So that's all this document's about.
Okay. Very good. So you need a motion to authorize the signature.
Yes.
So moved, seventy-day burn.
All right. And it's been moved and seconded. Call for vote, primar eye?
Aye.
Bureshank, aye.
Thank you.
And now we've got to approve a excess flood policy. Said you're waiting for a quote yet?
Yep. Um, so Judy Homacher sent that out. She said that you guys would have to formally approve if you want that quote obtained through Holmes Murphy.
Okay, so this should be basically to request a quote.
If you want to increase your coverage and, yeah, request the quote.
Okay. Any thoughts, gentlemen?
Guess it don't hurt to get a quote.
That part's true. Doesn't cost nothing. But I guess the question would be to what amounts? And I don't have those with me at the moment.
Did I give those to you?
Did you have a question?
Oh, no. Not yet.
I can forward you Judy's email, but it's just, it's hard to give you an amount without asking them to increase it.
To give, yeah. See if I've got that.
I thought Nancy forwarded it to you maybe.
Is that in the regular insurance?
The actual flood policy.
Well, that's, that's totally separate then from what we got to bill and insure in case of fire.
Correct. You guys already approved the flood policy, but now they're asking if you want the additional.
And I, I can't remember what those amounts were. I'm sorry. And I don't think I can get to it.
I mean, at this point, she just wants a verbal yes or no. I mean, you're not acting on the actual, but just verifying if you want the re, the And then I can bring it back to you.
Well, it won't, it won't cost anything to get a quote, correct?
Correct.
Well, I'll make a motion, go ahead and get a quote from them.
Okay.
For an increase, for an increased, uh, policy coverage?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I would imagine they would do that in stages, you know, like twenty-five, fifty, you know, up to a hundred or something.
I think she said it, yeah, it'd be increments.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I would imagine it would be, so, okay. Well, it's been moved and seconded and I will call for.
Did you second it? Who seconded it?
Gary.
I didn't hear him. Sorry.
He's kind of quiet over there.
Quiet over there.
Yeah. Good. Primar eye?
Aye.
Bureshank, aye.
And that's what company?
It's, it's through Heartland. It's for our flood, uh, insurance.
I think it's Holmes Murphy or through, isn't that what?
I just didn't know what the company is.
I think so. And I, I had my computer, I could probably access it. It's pretty tough on the telephone, at least for me. So, yeah. Gentlemen, any reports?
I had a housing trust fund last Thursday along with EZCOG. They're starting to look at projects on Eastern Iowa Trust Fund, not so much, nothing in really in Benton County. It's all kind of in Iowa County, so.
Okay.
About it.
Yeah. And I forgot to report last week that I had, uh, I had Heartland, which we went over the policy, you know, when they have a gentleman come in and, and they go through our policy for Heartland and, and kind of summarizes, if you will. And then I had Central Iowa General Detention. And so thank goodness we're about the end of that fiscal year, so, yeah. Okay. Well, then I'll ask for a public comment.
I'll go.
Okay. Kara? Is it Kara or Cara?
It's Kara.
I thought so.
My name is Kara Martin and I'm the former Benton County VA director. There was some email communication between the HR director and I last week and I'd like to address those questions she had. Ms. Wilber wanted to know why I stated I don't trust her with my confidential information. Sue, if you are so worried about employees and what they say and think during the onboarding process, exit interviews and how these stay interviews, why wasn't I afforded the opportunity to have an exit interview? I only left two months ago, well after you implemented those. Matter of fact, you even blocked me from having an interview conducted with Terry as a department head due to your allotted budget. You got to spend on her services. In a short story, I was told you didn't have enough money for me to give an interview and you afforded the chance to offer my insights and concerns and opinions. Do you want to know the best part? My successor in the VA office wasn't allowed to get that interview, so you didn't have money for me, but you conveniently did for her. It would seem to me that you only want to listen to employees that have your back. If I had been afforded not one, but two of those opportunities to express my insights and opinions, you might not be wondering why I made the statement you had. In short, I don't trust you because you're proving yourself to be an untrustworthy individual. You came to this county full throttle with some good ideas and I was initially excited to have you onboard. As your time here proceeded, you started to investigate the duties of other departments. You pushed to take on duties that aren't yours. My understanding is you've attended ISAC trainings for other departments that are outside of your purview. You waste time and taxpayer dollars by sitting in every posted meeting rather than conducting your actual assigned duties. And then you hire an assistant because you don't have the time to lead your work. You witch out employees that don't agree with or stand against you, for the more you push for them to be terminated, as we all witnessed with the IT director. You publicly argue and degrade our elected officials. You publicly insinuated that the sheriff's department couldn't be trusted and implemented your own policies for background checks, spending more taxpayer money. You consistently seek outside legal counsel, as we've all witnessed with the legal bills, again, spending more taxpayer money. You went to the auditor's office with a former employee under false pretenses to view and in your own words last week, spot-checked files in order to throw that department under the bus. You have a second job, something other employees have been fired for because it goes against the handbook, and I don't trust that you aren't conducting federal business on county time. You're out attempting to intimidate employees by taking pictures of them and members of the public, myself included, just last week. You very clearly aligned yourself with a few of the most hated men in this county. And last but not least, I feel like you're creating a toxic work environment. I feel like you could care less about all the extra taxpayer money you're costing this county because it doesn't personally affect you. You are not a Benton County resident and as such, your office budget doesn't affect your levy rate or property taxes. Shame on this board for constantly turning a blind eye and allowing all this to happen without any repercussions. You've actually done the opposite. You've continued to support her, thus supporting this behavior. Employees in the public are both crying out, she is out of control with harassment and spending, and you continue to vote aye on everything she desires rather than taking a stand for the people that elected you and the employees that you should be protecting. There are other options rather than seconded a motion you disagree with. Does nobody listen to their constituents anymore? If you all stay the course, you'll continue to lose good, hardworking employees in this county. And one last tidbit I'd like to point out, Rick, when I worked here, you commonly referred to me as young lady. I'd like to take this opportunity to let you know that I was offended each and every time. Your tone, affliction and verbiage made me feel as though you were speaking down to me as if I were a child. I think it would behoove you to assess how this might affect some other employees before continuing to refer to them as young lady as well. For example, in my own personal opinion, you should be addressing the county auditor as Auditor Ripple, Mrs. Ripple or Haley and not young lady as you did a few weeks ago in open session. It's degrading and insulting. Thank you Haley for taking a stand for yourself, your staff, county employees and the public that you diligently serve. And thank you Alexa for consistently coming here to voice your concerns and opinions. Those two ladies are my elected officials because they stand for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment too. My name's Kristy Nevear. I'm very new here.
You gotta speak up.
Kristy Nevear. I'm a, I'm a. Christine. We've been residents of Benton County now for nineteen years. Just recently retired and so trying to be a liberal activist, I volunteer, showers of blessings. I watched the meeting last week online yesterday and I was absolutely appalled at what took place between Ms. Ripple and whomever. And just the professionalism of this meeting, you as supervisors should have stopped that. You're always online and you're trying to do transparency. From a professional standpoint, it was just, I was just going, wow. I almost applied for that HR job. I was that far in the market. I would have been very qualified to have done it, at least got an interview, but I'm really glad I didn't now. Like, not as long as being last week, it's like, ooh. And I, I shouldn't have to feel that way as, as not even annoying me about Benton County, but just watching the, the charades happen last week. But I will ask a couple of things right now. And I don't have the agenda. I tried to look for the agenda. The only one I can find online is May 7th was the last agenda. I mean, the meeting minutes, so I don't know what the repercussions were. But I'm kind of curious about this HR part time assistant and how could you have published it, but yet you're still arguing over that particular point? Was this a whole project that was rolled out when HR said, hey, we need a new, uh, software system? I've just got some bullet points I'll read through real quick and I don't need comments. But you paid forty-five thousand dollars for the software. What information would the HR software hold? Only payroll information or will it have? Data burst, higher, higher dates, social security numbers, job descriptions, pay scale? How much would the annual cost be to sustain that software going forward? What job duty is going to be automated with the new HR package? So once you automate, I was in IT for over forty years. I love automation. I love computers, love IT, but did you consider that? Was it a whole project rolled out? Anytime you go from a manual system, I know there's always a need for additional input of data, if you want to get the, get it up and going, but at the same time, you're probably running parallel systems. You have to keep the manual going for a while, you have to get the new one going. What is the rollout time of that software? Has it been purchased already?
They had, nothing's been purchased.
Nothing's been purchased, yeah. So another thing, when you talked about the records, that part there was in safety and security ADM for fourteen years before I retired. And from a security standpoint, I know it's a hard copy file, but I was in safety and security and I had HR. We had different access to records. Some of the records are meant for HR, some are not. And just like Mr. Cook said, I watched him last week, I was going to his name, Mr. Cook last week had said, they shouldn't be divided. When we would have DOT come in at 8:00 a.m., we didn't hand them personnel folder. We handed them only records pertaining, you know, pertaining to DOT. When Warrantless Comp was involved, safety and security was with it. Once we got the medical information, the HR saying, this is what's recommended, they couldn't get the whole Warrantless Comp cases. There's so, so there's certain things. And the way it just happened last week was just, okay, typical, move the files, move them over there today. Who's going to have access to them? And once they have access to them, from a hard copy standpoint, I know they're being scanned. You have an IT department that controls your cybersecurity as to who can access that. So if you've scanned these documents, can I still see it? Everything was on the argument of that. So this kind of disappoints a lot of my partner.
And with, with that comment, I, Ms. Wilber handed this out to the personnel records and this is the payroll files that we are asking to keep as we conduct payroll. So for those of you, that should say.
Going now, please.
Yeah, you can have these. That's the one that we are. That's what I asked.
Thank you.
And the board all got a copy of that today as well as some letters from other county auditors who have both HR and the auditor doing the same stuff, so.
Let's see one thing. Along with this line, these guys go ahead, go ahead, design and got an HR person. And I guess, I mean, we're going down this road and that's fine. I don't know, like Christine has stated, also like as you've stated before, there is time to separate these things. Because what pertains to Haley's office is fine, stays with Haley. Pertains to HR, goes to HR. I mean, it's, it's fairly simple and we're making it a big to-do and so it would take Haley and Sue to sit down with somebody, maybe be a mediator and go through the files, this is mine, this is yours. I, if that's what it takes. You guys have got to decide this stuff.
There's got to be laws and compliances. I mean, compliance, you can say et cetera, so forth, but you have to be in compliance. There's compliance laws. There's sometimes safety and security was in charge of the compliance laws. When it came to personnel, HR took care of that. Divided duties. I don't understand why one person's trying to tackle all of this. And I don't know any of you. I know no history. I don't, I've read minutes since I retired. I have, just now, that was my first meeting I watched last week. And again, I was just labradasted with that took place on here and the Board of Supervisors allowed that to happen. The HR positions have been presented a long time ago and what that. That HR position should have been presented a long time ago, from what that project was going to do, that project should have been presented by the new HR person. Instead, this is what I plan on doing, and you guys talk about it, and then bring it to the public, say this is what we planned.
Can I make one comment, I have some email, the public speakers, if you could come forward by the microphones?
The future.
Yep, thank you.
It is a little hard, especially with this thing blowing behind us, so. Gentlemen?
So is there anything going forward, what you're doing, I mean, or is this just all that's standing still now?
I asked to be respected this week with the election, um, if you, anybody's been in my office this week, there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of equipment. I did not want to be burdened with this, but we are more than willing to sit with Sue and go through the files.
Okay, uh, can I make a suggestion, how about a date? Let's have a date that's gone by. You guys are, you know, got to decide that, but.
But just.
Let's put up, let's, let's, we're going to work on it, we're going to get it done by a date.
I would say like July first.
So I just wanted to circle back on that too, if I may, so it sounds like last week, action was approved and taken that they could be there on Tuesday. And then I got a call from Tracy Tuesday that said that they would come Thursday, and then Thursday, um, I asked for them and was told, um. That it would be further delayed, um, with no date given, and to respect the busyness for the office, um. You know, there's been comment about, uh, you know, sitting down and asking about this, I did go back and look. Um, it looks like I first started asking about this on July twentieth. Um, there was a few other ones in there than March sixth, or April second, April nineteenth, May tenth, May twenty-fourth, May twenty-eight, that I've been asking about this. Um, I now have requests from employees for copies of their personnel files, and I don't have, um, a full file to be able to give them. And I don't want to say, hey, here's your file, if I don't know that it's not a full file on them. Um, they said that they scanned some files, and, um, I haven't been able to look at all of them, but by my brief count, there's at least four who are safe, so not all the files are in there.
When you raise, would you tell us which ones you think are missing, because you've said that twice?
So, yeah, I guess I.
I guess, which ones are you looking for?
You know, we had, um, like that training, I, IPIP last week, I kind of talked about, um, you know, board action at closed meeting and open meeting. And so a directive was given at that meeting, there was no conditions put on it, there was no, I believe, in the meeting, Haley said, come and get them, have at it. And so that was decided, and so I'm just not sure why we're still delaying on that, and I don't have.
Are we going to go there again, guys? Come on, please, be respectful, I had a funeral last Thursday and an election. You're beating a dead horse, you got legal advice from our county attorney, not the old county attorney who was voted out, so what do you want to do?
Do, can we put a date on it?
Yes, and I want her and Nancy to sit down together, and I want to keep what I've respected to ask to keep. On that list, you read what other county auditors are telling me, these are my documents, I do the payroll. How do you expect us to continue to do payroll without the proper documents? Personnel files are separate than payroll, I want all the public to know that that's what this is about.
Yes, so. Typically, an HR office that has a place for a record.
Okay.
Into the confidential file.
I've got things to do.
Yeah, let's set a date, Kelly.
I said July first.
And so, again, I guess I would like to know.
Set a date that they can get together, and they can look at the files and go through it.
So again.
And decide.
Last Tuesday, you had said, Haley had said, go ahead and take them, and you had taken an action that said, we were going to take them. There was no conditions put on it, and nobody really needs to be involved in it, it's just transporting it from one location to the other.
But I think Serge said he lost a lot of files while shuffling things.
What's that?
We're not changing nothing.
She can go through and take what's personnel versus payroll out, but I'm keeping those hard files that my office purchased with my budget. And those are documents that my office prepared, and I will keep those for payroll.
Payroll files would be part of the personnel file, it's a separate section of the personnel file, so if somebody would want to call and ask a question about their W four, or.
Then they would call.
Okay, so what about when I get audited?
I O code dictates who gets the payroll file.
And that's me.
That's dictated by code.
And when the Ipers or somebody comes in and audits payroll, my name is on those paychecks, I want to verify and prove, I'm not going to come over here and say, oh, Sue, I need to look in your files.
You don't need to do that, you can keep that copy.
We're just saying, we don't want an electronic copy, you can print off those copies that I scanned for you, same thing as what I have, if you're, you have them, I want everybody to know you already have them.
I, I do not, from what I looked at, I do not.
You took the top ones, but this is not an argument for the public, did you not learn this last week?
Okay, let's get a date set.
For IPIP, we don't need to do this in a public meeting.
Right here, let's get a date set.
I said by July first, because just because the election's over tomorrow doesn't mean we're not still busy for the week.
You still have to do your polling and such next week, for example.
We have the post audit, we have the canvas, so I would ask for respect, by the end of the fiscal year, by July first. She can come through with Nancy, we have some time in between, and they could sit down and decipher.
So, I want to be clear on a couple of things, one is, um, the direction that was taken last week that was approved and voted to take. The board is not honoring that direction, is that correct? Because that was what was said in public meeting, that I would get them, and, um, there was no parameters, discussions, deadlines, uh, conditions at that time.
I think you're going to get access to them, so you are actually going to see them.
I just want to make sure that I, I have this notated correctly. The action that was approved last week, that I was supposed to have on last week, the board is not honoring that action that, that was approved in closed session.
You guys can amend your actions and rescind as well, we do that.
That's my first question.
We cannot do that because it's not on the agenda.
No, it's not, but we're not physically moving them correctly, did you not get advice after the fact?
Yes. After the fact.
Correct.
What was the advice after the fact?
Some of the.
Well, you're not supposed to share some of it, though.
I'm sorry, I was asking Tracy, I couldn't hear.
Some of the things should stay with the auditor's office.
Okay, and where did that direction come from?
The county attorney.
Okay, and what about Christie, the ISAC attorney? Would her specialty in employment law have any weight in that?
Can we, can I have a copy of that?
The county attorney has said a couple of times to me, and I think he'll willingly admit, employment law isn't his specialty, whereas the ISAC attorney, I would say, and I had sent you what she sent about that. So, just to be clear. We're not doing it because we're going to take that over ISAC attorney recommendation, is that correct?
I'd like to open record request, what ISAC was sent, and what you received back, I want to see how that was worded, if I could, please. Because we all sat through that at ISAC.
I just want to be clear on that.
As of right now, we're not moving nothing, as of right now.
Okay.
You will get something, till I get more information on this, on both sides.
Okay, so, um. When. I guess when would that date be?
July first, you said.
Okay.
This is by July first, or on July first? By July first.
What's by July first? A meeting? To decide what record she gets?
No, she will get.
Her and Nancy will sit down and go through the records.
I'm requesting that I keep anything, like I said, listed in there for payroll, Sue can have the personnel portion.
So in other words, you're going to vet those files first, that's exactly what you're saying?
No, they're open.
You get to keep what you've got, in, in the meantime, in a month's time, you could take what you want out of those files.
But they're already, she's already got them, she's already seen them, so it's not like I'm withholding anything at all.
I don't have them, I do not have them.
See, and there we go.
You have them on the scan, I already looked at them, so the first drawer, the top drawer, you had, but it's not the place to.
They're not there, I can show you them right here, it's not in there.
Then we need to talk to them, because they're in a secure server, scanned document.
So, um, again, I just want to try to protect the county as much as I can. Um, I ha- have heard from, um, potential staff that, um. Um, I'm just going to put in here that if I'm asked to produce it and I don't have it, and, um, it's a violation. I will just put on here that I asked, I requested, I was told I could, and then it got tabled, and so if, if a government agency comes in here to do an audit and it's not in there. I'm going to say I did everything I could, and you guys are comfortable with that, if they would.
If you request it, she's got a, we can get it to you.
Yeah.
I've had individual employees come to me as well and want copies of theirs, so.
Um, where, I mean, where's the communication at, like, is it completely lacking?
Yes.
Well.
Like, I was not shared this information that, that she obviously shared with the board, I was not shared, you know, I don't know what kind of advice, or what the questions were asked to legal counsel at ISAC either. Because my ISAC and other county auditors are all, like, I've shared some letters from different counties, they have HR departments. But again, they keep their payroll files. In order to do payroll, I have audits, I have Ipers audits, I have fiscal audit, so when those auditors come in and want to know why I changed somebody's pay, or this or that, I need the documentation to show that.
So you would still have it? The ISAC attorneys that you.
Okay, come on, I.
We have too many people going at once here, we're beating a dead horse.
Yes, we are.
And what I would recommend is, if you would, Sue, get her a copy of, uh, ISAC's.
Yeah, you were at that HR seminar.
Yes, and a lot of elected officials were there, Ron was even there too.
And although you said you hadn't heard it, and so you were at that seminar.
They said best practices, but it's not the law.
All right, let's stop this.
Right.
Well, you're allowing it.
If you would get her a copy of that letter, and then she would have that, please, okay?
Okay.
From there, uh. It's not on the agenda, so we can't make a motion or anything of that nature for that, uh, date for you to have it by, but you have a verbal on what they're looking at, so, okay?
Like I did last week, that wasn't honored.
So, but at least now you got a date, so, okay. All right.
Okay, uh. Let me just see here, um, so the employees that have asked for a copy of their files, just tell them I don't have that.
If you don't have it, they'll have to go to the auditor's office, that is correct.
Okay, if you want the payroll.
All right. So, okay.
Okay, um. Okay, I had a couple other things for public comment.
Again, we're not supposed to take the comments from employees during that time.
What was that?
I was talking to myself.
Let's, let's.
Um, another thing, I just wanted to give you an update on, in case you get questions from the public or anything like that, um. We have a sheriff's deputy posting currently, and, um, a member, I've been asked by the sheriff to not be involved in that process anymore. Um, it was posted on five twenty-two, but the, someone reached out and said they couldn't apply because the wrong website was listed in the posting. Um, and so I advised the Sheriff's Department of that, and then they fixed it on five twenty-four, it looks like it was reposted in the courthouse with the correct website. But, um, applicants couldn't find the website, I guess, or it wasn't on the website, on five twenty-four, it says, apply on the website. Um, but it wasn't out there, so then I received another call, and it said that it was posted on the website on five thirty. But now I got another call from a potential applicant that says they can't access the posting on the website, so, um. In case you should get a call, or the Sheriff's Department should get a call, um, uh, it looks like it's not out there active for people to apply to. And, um, I wasn't involved in that process, so I can't, um, help or direct them or anything, so just wanted you to know that, um, they're having some difficulty applying for that, so. And, uh, the only other thing I wanted to do was just revisit this transportation fleet issue, um. I think, um, on five twenty, Ron, you had said that you were in process of getting the vehicle registered, um, to get that kind of in process. Um, and then I reached out to Judy, and she said she hadn't heard from you yet on that process. Um, and I know the vehicle was ready back on four twenty-three, so I was just wondering if I could get a status update on, um, you know, if, if you were planning to reach out to Judy, you're kind of where that was.
The vehicle registration. Actually goes, doesn't get registered in the county, it goes through the morning, they register it, send it back, and then it gets the white official county plate to put on it. Uh, as far as a pool vehicle goes, it's not. I've only got one department that says they're going to utilize it so far, that would be Sue. Everybody else says they wouldn't, that I've talked to.
Wouldn't need it.
Says they wouldn't utilize it, and if I've only got, one department can utilize it, uh, it's probably not worth doing.
So when I asked you about it, I think back in February or March, and you said that's no problem, um, is there a reason you didn't tell me back then that if it's only you, it would be a problem, or kind of where, why, or how that changed?
We're looking at cost savings.
Right.
And I don't believe. Everybody getting a vehicle to use that would sit in the parking lot most of the time would be a cost savings to the county.
So, is it sitting in your parking lot not being used?
Yep.
Okay, and so it's going to be less insurance to switch it out of law enforcement's name?
Yep.
So it's sitting over there not being used?
Otherwise, we'd just, uh, sell it.
Right. So.
Because we don't have a use for it anymore.
Right. So again, I just, I just want to be clear, it, it wasn't an issue previously, and it was a cost savings, but now it's an issue even though it's still cost savings.
It doesn't look like it's going to be a cost savings in any, in any way.
So when you came to the meeting and said.
The only cost savings would be in the insurance.
Okay.
But we would still pay insurance on it. But if we've only got one department going to use it, it's not going to be much of a cost savings.
How about you and I get together, and, uh, I got a couple counties that do this, and I'll contact them, and then you and I can.
I've sent you a few, because we did contact you.
Okay. Yeah.
They don't have any policy, they just.
They just do it.
They just do it.
Okay, let's, let's, you and I get together on that, can we, please? Okay, thank you, all right, very good. Is that it?
Um, I think that's how I have.
Okay. Very good.
Motion, Karen.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, call for vote, primer, aye?
Aye.
Reers, aye.
Very good, thank you.